I said happy birthday, but I ain't know I was saying happy birthday to the senior. I thought I was talking to somebody who should have gone back to college.
No, no, I mean, the sensational sixties.
Well, I hope I look half that good when I make it. Hey, man, what? Throw it, man, throw it again, I guess.
What's up, Rich Jones?
What's up?
Yeah.
Let them laugh, straight up. Hey, look, I put on the real.
I put on the real, I put on the real A1. Really gotta be just like this. I'm so mad at them for making this shirt. I was like, why y'all just couldn't make one of these just like this? I would have been happy with it. Just put that fist, just put that fist up. But everybody don't know the situation.
Put that air code out there. Call him up and get it right.
Man, they gave, they gave us Flint a bad name, dawg. People be like, y'all a fool. I'm like, I'm not a fool.
I know, that's right. I hear you.
I'd be hating it.
Let's go. Hold on, I gotta get the seat for me. I only have, I have to finish my plate some kind of.
Hey, can you do that?
Yeah, he must be there.
That seat there gave him both of them.
Oh, yeah, there was almost a brawl. There was almost a brawl. You missed it. There was almost a brawl.
He got him to arrest.
For real?
Yeah.
But I was getting.
They have the same problem. We are Americans. We will fight.
That's right.
Cause they, they was ready to blow the lid off the king. I'm like, wow.
They was cheating, cheating like big dogs.
Boom!
That's right. Up my tree.
I'm in.
I knew you would. Yeah. You know I know where I am.
I ain't got them. I ain't got them.
Ten four, how you doing, bro? Hey, man, come on.
The time is now four forty-seven PM on Monday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. I call this special affairs committee meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alleming?
Present.
Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Mishat?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
You have seven members present?
We have seven members present. It is now time for the reading of, yes, ma'am.
Are you acknowledging me? I didn't hear you. Okay, um, I do have a question, um, in regards to Rule three point one. It states, "The council shall have a president and a vice president, uh, chosen by a majority of the council members elect term, which shall end on the second Monday in November." Three point one says until a, until a successor is elected. But what is in question is the city charter, page twenty-six. Page twenty-six states, "The president shall be elected to a one-year term." Um, for you to the, uh, city attorney, have we gotten a legal opinion yet from, you said there was an outside firm?
Yes, and I haven't received a legal opinion yet from an outside firm, but I have given my legal opinion on several occasions, and that position still holds.
Okay, I will be leaving this meeting, cause according to the charter, in order for us to change the charter, it must be taken to a vote of the voters. This has not been done. Rule three point one circumvents the Flint City Charter and allows for a president and for individuals to break, uh, break quorum and keep their positions. Our charter was not designed for that. I will be leaving this meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. I do want to, um, state really quickly that Rule three point one does not circumvent the charter. It does pick up where the charter left off and left a deficit. Thank you, Councilwoman in the fifth ward.
Madam Chair, um, do I have the floor? Madam Chair and, um, community, I too will be leaving this meeting. As far as I'm concerned, this meeting is not a legal meeting. Um, Councilwoman Mashet should not be chairing this meeting at this time, and I'm gonna stand with what the charter says. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do want to state again, for the record, that Council Rule three point one is not circumventing the charter. It is picking up where the charter has left off, as is the same rules when we follow Roberts Rules of Order. When the charter nor our, uh, council rules speak to what we should do in a situation, we defer to Roberts Rules. This is the same situation with Council Rule three point one. We are deferring to council rules where the charter has left a void. Thank you. Now it's time for the reading of the Disorderly Persons City Code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section thirty-one dash ten. Disorderly conduct, assault, and battering disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed. Are there any requests for agenda changes and or additions? Are there any requests for agenda changes and or additions? Seeing as how there are no requests for agenda changes and or additions, we will now move on to a public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box will be placed at the entrance to the council chambers for collection of registrations. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public comment, with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. First speaker, Madam Clerk.
Our speaker is R.L. Mitchell.
Good evening. I'm R.L. Mitchell. I live in the United States of America in Flint, Michigan, seven fifty-nine East Linden Avenue. And, uh, for the record, uh, I wanna, we the peoples wanna say thanks to our president, who made this move to give Ukraine some long-range missiles, for we can have a, a good Thanksgiving, where we can eat our turkey in peace, and like their country, Turkey, and, uh, and where we can have a smooth transaction in January, just like we supposed to have a smooth transaction at the council, with, and like, just like, see, you gonna be, you being dealt with right now. Ms. Mashak, yeah, hello, Ms. Mashak, I'm back. Mitchell, R.L., hey, you gotta have transparency. Look at me, lady. Okay, that's like I was saying, and another thing about the, uh, charter, like Charter three dash five oh one, ever since, I think it's, ever since seventy-three. We, we the peoples ain't going for this, this stuff. That's what they left for, you know good and well. Like they say, you don't, if you real peoples up there, you and, let's see, like you did, you vote, Ward one voted, and Ward two voted, and not, you don't want the, the new, this guy to be president, and he over, you up there breaking up the form, time the people leave, act like we the peoples don't, ain't concerned, act like we don't see that. Like the Hassel Center, all them, it really was built for them little kid baseball. That was, when I first saw them build the Hassel Center, I used to walk through that, going over by Northwestern to the hood, and somebody decided to make it senior citizen. Long time, they said, man, you better stop walking through this neighborhood at two o'clock in the morning. They be wondering, I be going over the behind Northwestern, over there on Way on Coldwater Road, like in it, and they be telling me, you better stay out, there been murders out there. I mean, you don't give a, and now that's, and the mosquitoes out there biting up peoples with, they're turning these schools into churches, and they ain't got a school in Flint. The, the money, the money, what's a lottery supposed to be taking care of the schools, and, and you up there, and, but I heard Ward one said he gonna, he know, that's in my ward, that's in my ward. He gonna be, he gonna make sure the Hassel's in the state. Hassel's in there gonna stay no matter what, cause them drackies over, I mean, them peoples over there in the neighborhood, all them houses.
Thank you, next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
What? Am I tearing up? What you, now listen here.
I'm sorry, what was that? Five seconds?
Oh, like I say, and you, uh, Mashak, you better straighten up and fly right.
Thank you, next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Rich Jones.
How y'all doing? My name is Rich Jones, and, uh, I just wanna take this time to let the people know that we need y'all to call Dana Nelson's office. The phone number is five one seven three three five seven six. The phone number is five one seven three three five seven six two two. I don't know why that just happened on my phone, but that's crazy. And the email is M I A G at Michigan dot gov, justice for Ray Vaughn. Um, that was the young man that received those shots in the back from the state trooper. So we are asking that everybody reach out and call to make sure that their family get all of the information that they need to go forward. The investigation, far as the state has conducted, is over and is now in the Attorney General's hand. Now we need some action, so I would like for y'all to participate and help out with that, and everybody with the sound of my voice to hear that, and that's all I gotta say. Thank you. Five one seven three three five seven six two two. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is James Moore.
James Moore, second ward, um, here once again, hoping that with that empty seat for the third ward, that third, third ward seat, um, the pressure on trying to find some truth and honesty, some peace. Um, in the meantime, y'all work together to try to work it out for the administration, the mayor, and most of all, for the citizens of Flint. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Almaro Collins.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I'm here to speak to you all about an issue, uh, that, to be honest, I'm, I may, uh, I think that some of you may not find important, uh, but I think it is important. Um, I'm here to talk about an ongoing issue, uh, within our, uh, entertainment venues here, as far as the Whiting Auditorium, the Capitol Theater, Dorf Federal Center. I'll just come out and say it. Since nineteen thirteen, a union for backstage workers has existed here in Flint. A lot of you might not be aware of that. Uh, I know we only see what goes on in front of our face, uh, and what goes on, on the stage. Uh, but these workers are responsible for building all the shows that we attend, again, at the Whiting Capitol Theater and Dorf Financial Center. Yet, since nineteen thirteen, the union has failed to be representative of our, of our whole community, as far as the people who they allowed to join their union. For a hundred and thirteen years, there has only been four black members in this union. Uh, you, you might ask, why is it so important for, uh, everyone to join this union? Well, we talk benefits, pension, uh, good pay, good constant pay. Um, these memberships have just been passed down for a hundred and thirteen years, from father to son, for over a century. Although there have been numerous people of color who have attempted to earn this membership. This is also important because this is reflective of the shows that are booked. Look on the schedule. Everybody get on their phone and look at the schedule of shows that we have at the Whiting Auditorium and the other venues here in Flint, and you tell me if that's representative of the whole community, or is that just representative of one part of this community? I'm also addressing this issue because we have a lot of people coming into our community now. Uh, and we don't want something like this to go on for another hundred and thirteen years. So I'm asking this council to investigate the discrimination, the unfair labor practices, the violation of civil rights and opportunities within our IOC two oh one here in Flint. And I also move for this council to suspend any funding until this investigation is completed. Any funding from the city, from the county, from the Moth Foundation.
Thank you, sir.
Who put in thirty-four million dollars.
Thank you, sir, your time is up.
To renovate the Capitol Theater, yet the Capitol Theater is still unrepresentative of the people of this whole community.
Sir, you no longer have the floor. That is your first warning. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Arthur Woodson.
My man, I'm with you. I'm with you one hundred percent, one hundred and fifty percent. And then they got the hundred million dollar millage, art millage, that they getting from African-Americans, but, uh, they don't represent us. Councilwoman Lewis, you passed a ordinance, and in that ordinance, it said that, uh, people should not harass, intimidate, or assault council people. That's, that, that applies to you too. You need to quit running around here harassing and trying to think that you intimidate people before something really truly happened. You gotta, you gotta calm down, and I'm not joking about that, because people getting tired of your mess. This democratic city, matter of fact, all these sorry democratic cities, all y'all, Judy, you included, you, you're a Democrat too. You say you're a Republican, but you're a Democrat too. You right along with all the rest of them. Y'all sit back and take advantage of the African-Americans, because they say they gonna vote for you just because you're black, or just because you're a woman. But you know what? Those times ha- ha- have stopped. People are tired of voting for black individuals who are gatekeepers and house negroes. And then a lot of y'all are just safe negroes. It's just a step away from being that house negro. Candace, I barely, barely hear you talk about water issues, even though you over the water lab. Did you know that putting too much orthophosphates in the water can be detrimental to a human body? Kidney disease, cardiovascular disease. A report was done by the registry, even though I hate them, all they do is lick stamps and send out letters, but they did do something right this time. They, uh, did a study and asked the people what were their, their illnesses. Orthophosphate causes kidney disease and cardiovascular disease. How is it that Flint, well, state of Michigan is three point one, but Flint is eight point four, kidney disease? How is it that the state is four point three and Flint is four point four in heart disease? Both of those issues right there is because of orthophosphates. No one really checked to see what would happen if we were on the water for eight years, adding extra chemicals to our water, once it's coming from Port Huron, treated already from Detroit. Y'all don't do that type of stuff. Jonathan, why are you sitting up there in this illegal meeting? I mean, I'm, I'm just asking. I shouldn't have said it like that. That was kinda aggressive. But why are you sitting up there in this, this illegal meeting? They can't add a time period in city council, I mean, council rules. They can't do that, man.
Thank you, your time is now up. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next, the next speaker is Beverly Biggs Levy.
My name is Beverly Biggs Levy. I'm in the third ward. But Dale, you need to stop telling people that you used to come to my restaurant all the time. I've never seen you, ever. You send people to my restaurant. Your neighbor next door comes to me all the time. I've never seen you, and I don't dislike you. You don't know why I dislike you? I don't dislike you. You are not even important to me, but quit telling people that you come to my restaurant all the time. You've never been there. I don't forget a face that I don't forget. What about the water? When are you guys gonna do something about this water? Why isn't that this water is not important to y'all? You never have a meeting on the water. Never, ever. The ninety-four million that came to Flint, why haven't the resident got any of it? You got your five oh one three C three. Candace tried to get her five oh one C three, but Quincy blocked it. So that should have told, that should have told you guys something. Y'all are not thinking about the residents. You're not. We irrelevant to you guys, and you know we are. But it's okay, cause one day them seats is gonna change. They're not there forever. And if you don't pick me, like I say, we'll redo it over again. And when I win this time, what will you say? I can't have it? You know, somebody asked me, uh, how you gonna feel in between the two devils? No, you need to ask the devils, how are they gonna feel in between me? That's the answer. I'm not gonna stop. I'm not gonna give up. And Judy, I would never have her sitting next to me, cause she brought them bras in. I see you pull them titties up. Have a good day.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Gladys Williamson.
My name's Gladys Williamson. I'm in the ninth ward. I first wanna start out with the water. You people, I can't even take a shower, because I can't turn the water. I have to go to my sisters to take my showers and wash my hair, because to turn that water on in the bathtub brings all that chlorine up and takes my breath away. It, it's strong. We got more chlorine running in our drinking water than they've got at the Swartz Creek Swimming Pool. Yeah, yeah. And when I see you guys sitting up there, all four of you people of evil means, you people need to put somebody that won that seat legally, that would be Ms. Biggs, and for you to sit up and try and just place somebody in there at the mayor's behest, i- it just shows how evil yous are. You are evil incarnate. And now I wanna speak to Judy Priestley. Ms. Judy, the way you guys stole that slate Thursday, yeah, you laugh, but we're gonna catch up to you, Judy, cause you ain't, she don't do anything different at our Republican conventions than she does sitting up there. This, in fact, these people resemble the Republican Committee. They do. These people are pulling the same thing on the Republican people, these rhinos, because they are not your patriot Republicans, and these people are not your, your patriot Democrats. These people have taken over our government, and that's who they are. And when you guys get around to it, and we can have our voice. And when you guys get around to it and we can have our voices heard, and the sooner that we can sit up and show everybody who yous are, that's when people are gonna come together on both sides, and you're gonna be out, out! And that's it. And Jonathan, thank you for staying long enough to hear us speak. I appreciate it. And it'll be all right, because as long as we stick together, you people can't win. Because if God be for us, nothing can stand against us.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The final speaker for this meeting is Sandra Jovan.
Me scared? Good evening. Wow. I just, like, I'm gonna echo what Gladys said as far as us coming together and standing against the system, because the system has failed, failed us terribly, both Democrat side and Republicans. So when we, the people, start standing against the system and put these people out, if you got so many skeletons in your closet, why don't you just come out and tell them? And then we'll have more respect for you of being honest than these, I'll use my words, than these losers that are in those chairs right now, because this is ridiculous. And just like Thursday night, they rambraided the EC Board right down your throats, no choice, no voting, no nothing, but yet you call out here in democracy. You guys are a joke, man. Like I said, this is a three-ring circus. And you know what? We're not even speaking to you. We're speaking to the people that are watching and paying attention to what you guys are doing for your people. Because once you're out of your seat, you're gonna have to face these people, unless you move back, you know, to the states you come from, because you were shipped in here. I'm not sure exactly what for, other than to destroy Flint. So when we said something about the land grab, or, I mean, we worded that one, the houses that were all put together and bunched up, and you couldn't even get your own home out of your mortgage, because they put them together with a hundred and some odd houses, and everybody's, you know, they're sitting up here telling you, we're gonna beautify Flint, we're gonna beautify Flint. Well, as you're beautifying Flint, you're not bringing jobs in. You're bringing up high-rise apartment buildings that they can't even afford. They couldn't afford their house before, so now you put in a freaking apartment building that cost them twelve hundred dollars a month, and you think they're gonna live there? No, they're shipping you guys out. That is the whole plan. And if you don't believe me, look what's happened to Mott Community College. If, that's another thing that's going on, you guys should be aware of, because that looks like a land grab to me, too, also, because the parking lot structure should have been tore down. There should have been new elevators put in there, and all this stuff is going to hell in the handbasket real quick. So open up your eyes, see what's going on, and as you see, not one of these people have looked up out of respect of anybody speaking. They don't care. You got in your chair, you got your money. You know what? You need a little bit of a scissors and cut them puppet strings.
Thank you. Seeing as how that was the last public speaker, is there anyone who wishes to speak during council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward, you have the floor.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Woodson, for bringing up harassment, because harassment is definitely not okay, especially the fact that you continuously ride by my house, and then you come to the lectern and you begin to speak on what's going on my property. That's also a form of harassment, and it's not okay. Just like Councilwoman Burns is posting pictures of the person that recalled her house on social media. That's not okay. When Jerry Winfrey Carter's aunt decided that she was gonna recall me three times, not once did I post her pictures. Not once did I say her name. I let her continue her business as she did and as she failed. But it is not fair to intimidate and harass individuals that are utilizing their democracy. So when we talk about, when we talk about harassment, we must look at it as in totality. And when it comes from these elected seats, it's not okay. When it comes from the audience members, it's not okay. People riding by your house consistently, it's not okay. What's also not okay is the fact that we have council members refusing to take their seats, council members that are elected to serve, council members that are getting rides by our Flint Police Department. We have Councilwoman Burns, who's getting a ride from the Flint Police Department at the courtesy and expense of the taxpayer, is deciding not to take her elected seat.
Please pause the time. What we will not do is yell out. The audience had their, we had a public response already. It is now time for council response. Public speaking has since passed. So we will add five seconds back to her time, and we will continue her time.
So if we are not gonna take our elected seats, let's make sure that we're not getting rides at the expense of the taxpayer. Every single ride, when I received my rides, when I received a valid threat to not to come to my job, I came from my ride to my seat. I didn't come from my ride to the audience. If we're going to get rides at the expense of taxpayers, at least we could sit in our elected seats and do our elected jobs. It's very unfair to the individuals that are paying taxes, and very unfair to the residents that have elected you to do a due. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response? Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
Yes, to the gentleman who spoke about the reunion issue. Unfortunately, we can't do anything about that. They're all, they're not under the city. The city doesn't provide any money to that issue, to those properties. So the Flint Institute of Music is a separate entity. It's a private organization.
Please, please pause the time.
This is not a give and take. So I wanted to let you know that we can't do anything about that, but I do recommend that you go to the Flint Institute of Music's board meetings and express your opinion. I don't know where they are, or I'm assuming they would be at the Flint Institute of Music, but I would absolutely go and see when they have meetings and express your opinions and your thoughts and feelings. We don't, we don't own Dort Federal anymore, if we ever did. I know it was owned by the IME at one point, so, and Prani. We have nothing to do with that. I wish we could help you, but we can't. It's not that we don't care. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the ninth ward, you have the floor.
Thank you. First want to say thanks, thank you to all who are in attendance this evening. I want to express that, one, it's good to be back home and able to sit in my elected seat to represent the constituents and the residents of the ninth ward. What I am committed to doing and will continue to be committed to doing is just that, serving the residents of the city of Flint. There will be those that coming in, I understood, would appreciate the way I go about it, and there will be those that don't. I gotta take the bitter with the sweet, the good with the bad. In that, what I do, how I go about doing it, I'm gonna do best I can to go about it in a way where, again, at the end of the day, I'm good with the decision I made and the way I went about doing it. So that said, I look forward to this meeting being what we make it to be, and as productive as we are intended to having it be, and us doing some work, the work, with the best intention for the city of Flint. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman in the ninth ward. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during council response? Seeing as how there is no one else who would like to speak during council response, I do want to go ahead and take my time. I know at the beginning of this meeting, there may have been some confusing messaging that was spoken out, so I want to make sure that we have clarity on that. Counselor Attorney, I know that you've already told us several times about your legal opinion and about the fact that Rule 3.1 for council rules leads, it takes over where the charter leaves some ambiguity, but if you could please, once again, explain your legal opinion as far as the leadership and where we are right now. Thank you.
So the first provision that we're looking at in the charter is Section 3-103 Subsection A. We're also looking at Section 3-201 Subsection A. The first thing I would note in both of those subsections of the charter, 3103A begins within thirty days of taking office, and then 3-201A ends with following certification of the election of its members. So both of those provisions of the charter seem to refer to when a new council, an entirely new elected council of nine, takes office. For example, that occurred back in 2021, and it'll occur in 2026, 2030, et cetera, every four years thereafter. 3103A does say the president shall be elected to a one-year term, and the language stops there. So that's where we take a look at Rule 3.1 of the council rules, where it states the council shall have a president and a vice president chosen by a majority of the council members elect for a term with shale and on the second Monday of November, comma, or until a successor is elected.
Request for information.
Please pause the time. What is your request?
Through you, Chair, to the attorney. Can you?
Because this is my time. I have the floor. What's your question for me?
I was, I was gonna ask the attorney the date of the documents that he's referencing, in particular, the charter.
So you can find the dates at the bottom of the charter, and it says when the rules were updated at the bottom of the rules as well. Both of those dates are on both of the things that you have.
So returning back to Rule 3.1, it does say, comma, or until a successor is elected. That's why I don't believe it contradicts the language that's found in the charter.
Thank you, Attorney. That is now the end of council response. We will now move on to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body concerning the consent agenda? Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
I make a motion to send the consent agenda to council.
There's a motion to send the consent agenda to council. Is there support? It's been moved and properly supported. Are there separations?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
I'd like to separate 240515.
Alrighty, are there any more separations?
Madam Chair.
You have the floor.
Let's also separate the, well, total separation.
Sounds good. There's a total separation. So moving on to Resolution 240511, which is the lease of real property, Hasselbring Senior Center, Hasselbring Senior Center, senior services organization. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
I believe I heard you all at the same time, so first ward.
I'd like to make a motion to move this to council.
There's a motion on the floor to move this resolution to council. Is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilwoman in the fourth ward. Is there discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the first ward, you have the floor.
So currently, as the lease agreement with Hasselbring stands.
I'm sorry, really quickly, can you please pause? I would ask that everyone, both on the dais as well as everyone in the audience, please turn off your cell phones so that there are no further distractions, no more ringing. Thank you. Continue.
So currently, as the lease agreement that has been negotiated and where it stands is the one in which Hasselbring will be obligated to pay five hundred dollars a month for five years as part of the lease agreement that was negotiated, signed off by the president and so forth a couple months back. But I did have some conversation with the executive director and the board of directors at Hasselbring over a week or so ago, and they had stated that as the lease currently stands, this is something that they don't really want to support at this time, and that they would like a dollar lease and a few other things amended into this lease. And so currently, I would like to table this currently until we able to reevaluate that and have some negotiation and so forth, and try to come to a better understanding of where we're gonna get to with this lease.
So if I hear you correctly, you would like to postpone indefinitely Resolution 240511?
Correct.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
It's been moved and properly supported. Roll call, Madam Clerk. This is the roll call vote to postpone indefinitely Resolution 240511-T, which is the lease of real property, Hasselbring Senior Center, Hasselbring Senior Center, senior services organization.
Mr. Earl Hallamine?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mishap?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. That resolution has been postponed indefinitely. Moving on to Resolution 240515-T, what is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
Send to council.
There's been a motion to send this resolution to council. Is there support? It's been moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward. Councilwoman in the fourth ward, you have the floor.
So I have some questions regarding this, which is why I was voting to keep this in committee Wednesday, but Mr. Jarrett wasn't here. I'm just wondering, through you to Mr. Jarrett, my concern about this is how are we going to know, make sure that your ward gets the appropriate number of speed humps? All of our wards want them. That's a smart decision to send this. But my question was, is how are we going to ensure that your ward gets the extra speed humps and not another ward? Madam Chair, he's looking at you.
Do you have any more questions?
No, I asked through you to him. Are you gonna answer?
Oh, I'll answer it if it's okay.
Absolutely, go ahead.
No, in giving thought to the resolution itself, I spoke with the department head, and we come to understand that jointly, he and I will identify within the wards where these are placed.
So the additional.
So that's how I came up in having conversation with him. That's how I came up with the specific number of twelve speed humps, because of the cost associated with each individual speed hump, its installation and all.
Includes the.
So we have had detailed conversation about that.
Okay, thank you. That was my question. Are you?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like the floor at this time?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. So, you know, being that a lot of us had meetings with our residents to discuss where they wanted to see this near thirty thousand dollars spent. I know that speed bumps were installed at the expense of the city throughout every single ward, and so that's an expense that the city was picking up. And so my question was, were you aware that you could reach out to the city, to Rob McGaha, and have these speed bumps installed for free? Through you, Madam Chair, to the councilman in the ninth ward.
Councilman.
Again, I've had conversation with him and have requested additional speed humps, but the allocation that they had initially had already been, had already been installed. This also gives me the opportunity to speak very directly to the constituents that have reached out to me. And the majority, again, and we've talked about how each of our wards are different. In my ward, one of the things that I deal with and get calls on very frequently is traffic up and down the streets. So for me to be able to address with this one-time dispersment of thirty thousand dollars, something that's gonna last longer than one summer, and address a need that the residents are telling me we have, it was not a difficult decision at all.
Okay, all right. And so, so the other issue was, I also know that some ninth ward organizations were reaching out, and they were, they were inquiring about the funding as well. Some of them, like such as. Some of them, like such as, I know Heather Creek, I know that they wanted to know about, no, um, excuse me, dollars for program support. And so, I didn't know if they reached out to you and if you had an opportunity to speak with other org.
I'm sorry, if we could please, if you, if you would just point out who is disrupting so that they can give, get a warning, that would be great. Continue.
Alright, not a problem. So, so knowing the, I have a, a relationship with organizations and residents in the ninth ward as well, and they were inquiring how they will be able to have a voice in the say of their thirty thousand dollars. So, just wanted to know if you had an opportunity, and I know that I tagged you on an email with Pastor Gary that does a lot of great things in the ninth ward. So, didn't know if they knew the direction that you were going in, in terms of spending the, the ward's thirty thousand dollars. So, that's through you, Madam Clerk, not Madam Clerk, Madam Chair.
I understand. Councilman?
I, I did get a sense of the request from my ward by those who reached out to me.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Are you yielding the floor? Councilwoman, are you yielding the rest of your time?
Yes, sorry about that.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the first round of discussion? Alright, I will go ahead and take my time. Infrastructure is certainly important in the city. Councilman in the ninth ward, I do wanna correct something that you said about it lasting beyond the summer. The speed humps that we place in the city of Flint, they're generally laid down during springtime, and then they're taken back up in November, depending on how the weather is behaving. And so, this thirty thousand would only be for a one-time use of speed humps, for twelve speed humps only one time next year. So, after that year is up, have you determined if you're going to put the speed, how you're going, if you're gonna do twelve more speed humps? And how you would do that?
We're purchasing the speed humps.
Correct, but what I'm saying to you is, is it, is there something in place to where this is gonna get put back in the same spot every year? Is that your understanding of your agreement?
Yes, yes, it is.
Mr. McGah, are you in the building? Mr. Woodson, please stop yelling out.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. McGah.
Hello.
Just, and just a quick question for clarification, so that I do understand what is going on. With the twelve speed humps, that the money is going toward transportation, are these twelve speed humps going to be placed in the ninth ward every single year from the thirty thousand on out? They will be guaranteed that twelve every year?
Uh, there has been no discussion with me about.
So, no, that is not correct.
I, I have not had that discussion.
Okay, alright. And with the thirty thousand, after that's done, will, will the twelve speed humps be placed every year? Is that possible for them to be placed every year, or is it just gonna be for that year?
It's possible, yes. But we don't, we haven't planned it out. We don't, there's been a little conversation about it with me, so.
So, that's not a guaranteed every year? It is just for the year, next year?
As long as they don't disappear, we could, you know, that is an issue also, them disappearing.
By, by disappear, you mean find themselves rehomed by someone other than the city? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, there have been some speed humps rehomed. Alrighty, well, thank you very much, Mr. McGah. Hopefully, because my colleague seems to have the understanding that these twelve will be placed in the ninth ward every year, is there any way you all can get that understanding?
Oh, I'm sure we could probably come to some sort of an agreement on it.
Do you need more time? Is that something you can agree to now, or?
I'd have to talk to administration about it.
Oh, alrighty. Well, thank you, 'cause he's under the impression that this is going to happen every year. Nope?
I haven't had much conversation about the thirty thousand dollars besides a conversation with him about how much it costs.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Alright, that concludes the first round. Is there any discussion in the second round? Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
Again, through you to Mr. Jarrett. Was your understanding that these were going to be placed in your ward every year?
That's the understanding I have, but.
Okay, what would you like us, with, would you like to get clarity? Would you like to leave this in this, in, in this committee?
Uh-uh, I wanna move it.
You wanna move it?
You all either voted up or voted down.
Okay. That was my question. I wanted to make sure.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like the floor in the second round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
I just wanna be clear on what I just heard. So, did he say that he didn't want it sent to another committee? Oh, excuse me, through, through you, Madam Chair, to.
I'm sorry, what she asked was that he wanted to stay in special affairs until he could get that guarantee or get that clarity from the administration that these will be placed in his ward every year, because he was under the impression that once he gives this money, it will be placed in the ward every year. And Mr. McGah stated that they did not have that understanding.
Okay, so, so what I would like to do, I would like to make sure that we get everything ironed out. I would like to send this to, back to finance, so we get everything ironed out and we can move forward with it, since he didn't want to send to special affairs. We left special affairs.
There is a motion to send this back to finance. Is there support? I will support it. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley? Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mishap?
Yes. Mr. Jones, would you please?
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Earl Alamein? The vote is three yes, two no?
The vote is three yes, two no, so that motion fails. Is there? No, so there's no other motion, so now we go back to the original. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in the second round of discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk. This is the vote to send this to council.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns is absent. Ms. Mishap?
No.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamein? Ms. Lewis?
No.
The vote is three yes, two no?
The vote is three yes, two no. That resolution fails.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
Motion to keep in special affairs.
There's been a motion to keep in special affairs. Is there support? I'll support it. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns is absent. Ms. Mishap?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamein? Ms. Lewis?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
The vote is four yes, one no?
The vote is four yes, one no. That motion fails. Alrighty. Moving on to appointments, Appointment 240522-T, yes. Mr. Woodson, stop yelling out. There are several people on the dais who can point out that quorum is no longer had. Stop yelling out. No, the meeting is not over. We still have colleagues who are still in the building, so we will give them an opportunity to take their seat. Uh, Mr. Pfeiffer is here and able to take his seat. Ms. Winfrey Carter is here and able to take her seat. Ms. Burns is here and able to take her seat. Mr. Jonathan Jarrett is here and able to take his seat. My colleagues in the fifth, in the sixth, in the eighth, and in the ninth ward are present and available to take their seats.
So, appoint a board, Madam Clerk.
Yes, what is your point?
So, we can, so we can proceed with the discussion, and then we can wait and be at ease until Mr. Jarrett takes his seat.
Okay.
Since he stated that he's here to finish the business of the city.
Alright, sounds good. I do see that Mr. Jarrett is back there speaking with Mr. McGah, and so, we will remain at ease with no disruptions from the audience until Mr. Jarrett takes his seat. Thank you.
[inaudible]
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 Councilwoman Priestley, could you please come to the dais?
Right, Madam Clerk. Right, Madam Clerk. Right, Madam Clerk.
Right, Madam Clerk. Alright, uh, it is 5:50. We will now, um, return to our session. Madam Clerk, do I need to do a re-roll call? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. O'Alameen? Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Priestley? Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns is absent. Ms. Mishat?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jared? You have five members present?
We have five members present. I believe we were... Moving on to appointments. I do want to ask that the audience please silence the room so that we are able to continue our meeting. Moving on to appointments. Appointment 240522-T, which is the appointment of Marzu Hussey, Flint Housing Commission Resident Commissioner. What is the pleasure of the body? Uh, there's been a motion by the Councilwoman in the fourth ward to send to council. Is there support? Moved improperly supported by the Councilman in the first ward. Is there discussion? Councilman in the ninth ward, you have the floor. I would ask, before we start his time, I'm gonna ask the audience again. There's far too much chatter. We are having a hard time hearing each other up here. Go ahead, Councilman in the ninth ward.
Is, is this candidate present?
Um...
Are any of the three candidates present?
Is Mr. Marzu Hussey pla-present? I don't believe he is, no sir.
Okay, that's all.
Alright, is there anyone else who would like the floor in the first round of discussion? Count, um, Mr. Jones, please stop yelling out. Alright, Mr. Jones, that's your first warning. Alright, Mr. Woodson, please don't tell people how to be disruptive, thank you. Alright, roll call, Madam Clerk. This is the vote to send Appointment 240522, uh, to council.
Ms. Burns is absent. Ms. Mishat?
No.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jared?
No.
Mr. O'Alameen? Ms. Lewis?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. The vote is zero yes, five no.
The vote is zero yes, five no. This appointment is not going to council. Uh, what is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair, oh, go ahead.
Madam Chair, um, sent to, um, Government Ops.
There is a, uh, a motion on the floor to send resolution, uh, excuse me, Appointment 240522 to Government Ops. Is there support? Support? Has been moved improperly supported by the Councilwoman in the second ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Mishat?
Yes.
Mr. Jared?
Yes.
Mr. O'Alameen? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. This appointment has been sent to Government Ops. Moving on to Appointment 240523, which is the appointment of Tridel Kennedy to the Flint Housing Commission. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward?
Send to Government Ops.
Uh, there is a motion on the floor to send this appointment to Government Ops. Is there support? Moved improperly supported by the Councilman in the first ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jared?
Yes.
Mr. O'Alameen? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Mishat?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. That appointment has been sent to Government Ops. Moving on to, uh, Appointment 240524, which is the appointment of Bob Brown to the Flint Housing Commission. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward?
Send to Government Ops.
There is a motion on the floor to send to Government Ops. Is there support? Moved improperly supported by the Councilman in the first ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. O'Alameen? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Mishat?
Yes.
Mr. Jared?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. That appointment has been sent to Government Ops.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward?
Um... I'd like to... Make a motion... To send 240515 back to Finance.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'd like to make a motion to send 24051, uh, 515 to Finance.
Ah, I see what you did there. Because we are still in the same meeting, we can reconsider right away. Is there support to send 240515 back to Finance? Alright, I guess that motion fails from lack of support.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, there's a motion to adjourn. Is there support?
Support.
Moved improperly supported by the Councilwoman in the second ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Mishat?
Yes.
Mr. Jared?
Yes.
Mr. O'Alameen? The vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. The time is now 5:57 PM. On Monday, November 25th, I call this Special Affairs Committee meeting to a close.
Alright, we're about to get ready to start. Madam Clerk, are you ready?
Start the meeting, the Vena? Rick ain't taking shit for the team. He say fuck the team. Real's real. Taking pictures of my house and sending pussy keys. That's the way. That's nothing taking care of yourself. Did I hear what I just said? Nothing ain't taking care of yourself. He say fuck the team. Oh, bro. Oh, you know, something big. Start the meeting, the Vena? Damn, they can't even start this meeting. Oh, they got five? It's the Vena. Not here, not here, not here.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get ready to get started. So, I would ask any council members participating in this meeting to take their seats. And I will informally call this meeting to order. It is 6:07 PM. And we will start with the organization of City Council. City Council President. The City Council shall elect from its members a presiding officer who shall be known as the President of the Council. And we are going to start where we left off during the last regular meeting. And that is with round number 346. Um, as before, I will call the council member's name in vote order. And you will state the name of the individual that you would like to elect as President of the Council. So, I will start with...
Madam Chair.
Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. I would like to, to put a motion on the floor to postpone the election to the end of the 500-page agenda that we have. Just so we can move forward with the business of the city. I know we have a lot of important things on here, such as... I know we had the Ashley Capital deal, the Oak Park sale. We also had the peaceful involved dads. We have the debt elimination here. We have the paving of roads, uh, throughout the entire city. Wars of five, eight, um, and also some on the north side. So, um, I would like to put a motion on the floor to postpone the election to the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Um, so, Ms. Lewis, that would be after the introduction and first reading of ordinances?
Pardon?
At the end, you mean right before final council comments?
Um, yeah, yes, before, um, of final council comments.
Um, Ms. Lewis has put a motion on the floor to postpone the election of President until the end of the agenda, after all action items, and right before final council comments. Is there a second on her motion? Ms. Mishat has seconded that motion. So, we will start with Mr. O'Alameen?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley? Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Mishat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Jarrett? The vote is for yes, for no, that motion fails. And that takes us back to the election of.
Point of order.
Ms. Burns, what is your point?
Madam Clerk, it is hard to hear you, and it, it sounds muffled in your microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to, again, ask the audience to please try to keep the noise down and everything, so that we can make sure that we hear this most important vote from everyone. So, we are going to pick up where we left off last meeting, which is round 346. And again, I will call the council member's name, and you will state the name of the person that you wish to elect as President, starting with Mr. Alamin.
Candace Mashat.
Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Jonathan Jarrett.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms., Ms. Mashat?
Candace Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett? That's four votes for Ms. Mashat, one vote for Mr. Jarrett, three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round 347. Ms. Lewis is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Candace Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamin. That's three votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round 348. Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Candace Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis is not in. That's three votes for Ms. Mashat. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. It's round 349. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat? Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, three votes for Ms. Mashat. And, again, before I move on to round 350, I'm going to implore the audience to please refrain from stating names or speaking too loud, their voices carry, so, I know this is important to everyone, and I want to make sure that we can hear what's going on in the room, so I'm, I'm asking again to have some consideration. Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Candace Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, three votes for Ms. Mashat. It's round 351. Ms. Mashat?
Candace Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
That's three votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round 352. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Candace Mashat.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, three votes for Ms. Mashat. Round 353. Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Candace Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, three votes for Ms. Mashat. Round 354. Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett? That's four votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. It's round 355. Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamin? That's four votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round 356. Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Four votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round 357. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Four for Ms. Winfrey Carter, four for Ms. Mashat. Round 358. Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley is not in. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, three votes for Ms. Mashat. Round 359. Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley is not in. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Three votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round 360. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley is not in. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Four for Ms. Winfrey Carter, three for Ms. Mashat. Round 361. Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley is not in. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, three votes for Ms. Mashat. Round 362. Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley is not in. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Three votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round 363. Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley is not in. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Three for Ms. Mashat, four for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round 364. Ms. Priestley is not in. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, three for Ms. Mashat. Round 365. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley? That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round 366. Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Four for Ms. Winfrey Carter, four for Ms. Mashat. Round 367.
This is my mic.
Okay.
Trying to fix it.
Let me see. Static here, or?
Yeah, what's wrong with? No, it's better.
It's okay? Okay. 367. Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
That's four votes for Ms. Mashat, four for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round 368. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round 369. Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round 370. Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley?
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat?
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Four votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and seventy-one. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. That's four votes for Ms. Mashat. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and seventy-two. Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and seventy-three. Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
That's four for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Four for Ms. Mashat. Round three hundred and seventy-four. Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Four for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Four for Ms. Mashat. Round three hundred and seventy-five. Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Four for Ms. Mashat. Four for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and seventy-six. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
That's four for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Four for Ms. Mashat. Round three hundred and seventy-seven. Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round three hundred and seventy-eight. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns. Is not in. Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. I'm sorry, four votes for Ms. Mashat. Three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and seventy-nine. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. That's four votes for Ms. Mashat. Three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and eighty. Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three eighty-one. Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
That's three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round... Excuse me, round three eighty-two. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three eighty-three. Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns is not in. That's four votes for Ms. Mashat. Three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and eighty-four. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
That's three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round three hundred and eighty-five. Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
That's three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round three hundred and eighty-six. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
That's four votes for Ms. Mashat. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and eighty-seven. Ms. Lewis. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. That's four votes for Ms. Mashat. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and eighty-eight. Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
That's four votes for Ms. Mashat. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and eighty-nine. Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round three hundred and ninety. Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round three hundred and ninety-one. Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
That's four votes for Ms. Mashat. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and ninety-two. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round three hundred and ninety-three. Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round three hundred and ninety-four. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and ninety-five. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and ninety-six. Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Four votes for Ms. Mashat. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Four votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three hundred and ninety-seven. Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat, oh, Mashat, excuse me.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round three hundred and ninety-eight. Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round three hundred and ninety-nine. Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Four votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round four hundred. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round four hundred and one. Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round one, I'm sorry, four hundred and two. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Four for Ms. Mashat, four for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round four hundred and three. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Four votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round four hundred and four. Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Four votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round four hundred and five. Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round four hundred and six. Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round four hundred and seven. Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
That's four votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round four hundred and eight. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round four hundred and nine. Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, four votes for Ms. Mashat. Round four hundred and ten. Mr. Alamin. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Four votes for Ms. Mashat, four vote for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round four hundred and eleven. Ms. Lewis.
Mashat.
Ms. Priestley.
Mashat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mashat.
Mashat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. Four votes for Ms. Mashat, four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Uh, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Lewis.
So seeing that we have went several rounds without a resolution, and we still have over five hundred pages of important city business to go forward, I would like to once again put a motion on the floor to move the appointments back. And I will say maybe we can move the appointments, not all the way to the end, but just after resolutions. We can start back with the rounds for voting. So I would like to put that on the floor, so.
Support.
Ms. Lewis has made a motion to postpone the election of the President and Vice President until after the resolutions on the agenda. Support from Ms. Priestley. Okay, so I'm going to return to um, the next person to vote in the regular motions as opposed to in these rounds. So for this motion, that is going to be Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Priestley.
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
No.
Ms. Burns.
No.
Sorry, Ms. Burns.
No.
Ms. Mashat. Mr. Pfeiffer.
No.
Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Alamin. The vote is four yes, four no, that motion fails.
Madam Clerk.
Ms. Lewis.
Yeah, so I just would like to announce that I will be leaving this meeting out of respect for our staff, who's been here all day and they're here to get the business done. Clearly, we are at an impasse and colleagues are not willing to budge. So out of respect for the colleagues, as well as for the individuals that are here to see the business done, I will be removing myself for this meeting. So maybe next meeting, we can go on with the business of the city and move these monumental dollars.
Point of order. Point of order, Madam Clerk. Uh, let this be clear that the staff is normally to stay to nine o'clock. It is currently seven oh two PM. And um, First Ward, Second Ward, and Fourth Ward and Seventh Ward are breaking quorum to whereas there is going to be unfinished business with the city. I am willing to stay here as long as it takes to pick a President and Vice President. They are derelict in their duty. They are leaving their elected seats. They are bailing on the residents. They don't care. We are governed by the Charter to pick a President and Vice President on the second Tuesday of every November. They are breaking the council rules, breaking the Flint City Charter. It is not the four who are still seated. Liddell Lewis, Leon Alamin, Judy Priestley is in her seat, and Candace Mashat have broken quorum.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Madam Chair. Or Madam Clerk, let's, let's uh, stay at ease until those colleagues come back.
Just one moment, Mr. Pfeiffer. Um, to the audience, please, if you could, please, so that we can hear the council persons.
Madam Chair, we'd like to stand in uh, stand at ease until they come back.
Okay, um, so um, the council will stand at ease. It is uh, seven oh four PM. We are at ease with council persons still in the chambers. So seven oh four, we are going to stand at ease.
Madam, Madam Clerk, can we state that we still have council members in the chambers? Councilwoman Liddell Lewis, Councilwoman Judy Priestley, Councilwoman Candace Mashat are in the back corner, still inside of the council chambers. They are still here, not willing to do what the Flint City Charter dictates we shall do. They are derelict in their duty. They are not following their oath that they took to follow the Charter.
Okay, um, yeah, Ms. Burns, um, as I stated, per the rules, um, council is at ease as long as they are still in the chambers. So you stand at ease at seven oh five PM.
Madam Clerk, in respect for my colleagues and our staff, I am leaving this meeting. Nine o'clock for the staff. They receive, we received a memo that staff is to stay to nine o'clock PM. That is apparently not happening. And, and also, we need to state that what happens is the next meeting with their rule three point one, it defaults according to them with changing the Charter, changing the council rules, that they have put themselves back in these same positions. This means that Liddell Lewis and Candace Mashat and Judy Priestley will still maintain those positions by breaking quorum. It is a rule that is put in place to circumvent the city charter, and it is wrong and it is lawless.
Request your information. Request your information. Ma- Madam Clerk, that, are those, are those positions vacated?
So, there is a difference of opinion to how the rules are interpreted?
Tell me this. If I understand correctly, there's a difference in pay for, if I understand correctly, there is a difference in pay grade for the President and the Vice President?
No, the President gets more than the other council members.
Ha- Has that been modified? Has that been modified?
No.
Why not?
Um, because there has not been an official election or vote. So in order for me to submit that to HR, you would have to choose a President.
Wow, Madam Clerk, wow.
Madam Clerk, um, um, point of, point of order. Madam Clerk, first of all, this is wrong. And you need to start following the protocols. Our Charter, our council rules should align with the Charter. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna let you know, I'm gonna put it out there and it's on the record. I will not be attending the special council meeting that is scheduled for tomorrow.
Madam Clerk.
I will not be attending.
So you don't have to call me when they say, "Call me when I'm not there tomorrow." I will not be there tomorrow if Liddell Lewis is chairing.
Madam Clerk. If Liddell Lewis is chairing that meeting, I will not attend that meeting. Because she's no longer the President. We need to also state in our council rules, this is the first time our city council rules have not aligned with the Flint City Charter in a hundred years. In a hundred years. They have been able to circumvent and create a loophole to maintain and keep these positions and hold the city of Flint hostage. This is a problem. There will be a press conference tomorrow at three o'clock PM. We need the public to show up. They broke quorum.
Okay, and I don't believe there, I believe you are the only four council members left, so this meeting is adjourned due to lack of a quorum at seven ten PM.
What number?
Round, you would have been on round four hundred and twelve.
That's the last one we voted on, or that's what's next?
You voted on four eleven.